With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone. We call this meeting in order to note that all board members are present tonight. With that, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented, noting the addition of K-12 top layer and.
Someone.
Motion by Member King. Second, second by Member Peterson. Any discussion on that? And if you're not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. With that, we'll move on to our open forum session. As always, we're going to try to limit comments to five minutes in length. And just be advised, the board might not respond to any questions at this time. So with that, if you'd like to address open forum, please raise your hand and I'll call on you and then you can state your. So with that, is anyone here to open forum? Mr. Chair, I do have one to read. Okay.
My name is Callie Krebs. This letter is expressed with great frustration, but more importantly, to alert you, the Oakley School Board and the community. My student attends Oakley Public Schools and on May 11th, 2023, while riding the bus, was hit repeatedly in the face of seven times by another student. When my student attempted to escape the abuse by sitting elsewhere, the other student followed and was taunting by making faces and informed my student they were going to poke my student's eyeballs off. On May 16th, I drove my student to school for the track and field day. My student pointed out the other student while exiting the vehicle, that the student that did the punching was walking towards the track. I suspected that the student was attempting to funday without repercussions for the behaviors towards my student. My student was very excited for this day and was looking forward to it. As they shared that feeling with parents, grandparents, aunts and uncles. I could see my student was concerned with the day at that point. I had been assured by the principal that it would be taken care of and I may have over assumed disciplinary actions, especially when your actions could hurt or even take someone else's life. Again, I have taken this time to inform you so that you might be the eyes and ears to ensure a consequence that hopefully deters another incident as this. It is important, we all understand accountability we each have as a parent, as a community member, and as a school system to our children. This has resulted with trauma and sleepless nights for all of us. Dealing worry for my students' mental and physical state.
Okay, thank you, Member Peterson. All right, with that, does anyone else wish to address open forum tonight?
Mr. Chair, we did also receive two through our, through our open forum at oakley.k12.m and .us. And so one is dated Wednesday, May 3rd, and it's by Reno Gunderson. And Reno Gunderson says to our board, this document was obtained through a public data request from dated 25 of April 12th, April 25th, 2023, and received May 3rd, 2023. Stemming from board, a board meeting on August 20th, 2018. The published minutes can be found at Knavon County Times on November 8th, 2018 issue, and then there is a website for that. And then she states, the attached document is important for both the community and board members to be made aware. So just making you as a board aware that there was a data request and that this was the data request on that date by this person. And again, brought that through our open forum. And then we also received an open forum that said it was from Raya Janu. And it says, hello, I was checking your website and see you have a good design and it looks great, but it's not ranking on Google or other major search, search engine. We can place your website on Google's first page, Yahoo, Facebook, LinkedIn, YouTube, et cetera. May I send you a quote? And with this one, because it was, it just looked a little different. And it was more of like our, our school website than I forwarded to, to Becky Coleman. And we deemed that this wasn't something that we should be acting on. But just wanted you to be aware also that that came through our open forum email at, at the school. And I don't believe there were any others. Did you?
That's the two ayes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right, with that, anyone else want to address open forum tonight? All right, with that, we will move on to the number five, student council report by Natalie DeVito Bailey Heald and Laney Dixon.
Hi, I'm Natalie DeVito Bailey Heald and Laney Dixon are with me from the student council. We are brought to here because we want to address the letter that we sent, the student council sent out to the board. I guess kind of just to start off, would we want to reread it or is the board well aware of the letter?
I think I reviewed it. Is anyone else ready? Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good. Basically, we just have a few points that we want to address. Whether there's responses or not, we have very open ears and we just want responses, answers, ideas, whichever. Laney Dixon, would you like to start?
Yes, I was going to start with Pro Crisis and after the meeting we had on, was it Friday?
Yep.
We have had follow through with Pro Crisis Center and we have made contact with Pro Crisis Center. And I actually went there today to check on, see how things were doing. And it is, the motion is going forward to set up the classes next year. This year, we'll have them set up for next year. Is that any questions or comments on that?
What's happening with that? I mean, explain, go a little bit more in depth with that if you could, please.
About Pro Crisis or the?
Yep, please.
Like stated in our letter, Pro Crisis is an in-class teaching program that teaches how to have healthy relationships with other students. It does sometimes focus in on bullying and other like relationships with like dating and things like that and how to see the signs of abuse or how to help. And it's just another resource for kids that might need help with relationships that are struggling.
Okay, next we'd like to talk about some of the policies and how we'd like to see some changes or adjustments with these. And I'd like to draw your attention to policy 514, the bullying prohibition policy, article two, general statement of policy. As mentioned in the letter, it's, is found in the handbook that, or actually at your last meeting, it was stated that the school cannot take serious action against a student for something that happened outside of school on student's personal time. But as myself and a few other members read the handbook, we came across this, which states this policy, it's under article two of the general statement of policy. It states, this policy also applies to an act of cyberbullying, regardless of whether such act is committed on or off school district property and/or with or without the use of school district resources. And so with that, I guess we just want some clarification on that policy because maybe it needs to be adjusted or looked into more. And on that note, we want, we want the board to specifically like sit down with the committee in charge of these policies and really focus in on them with the issues that we've been having. And then on that note, we want to look at the ladder of discipline because we feel as if it's very vague because some of them refer to definitions. Like for example, under chemicals, it says, see handbook policy 417, and it gives you definitions. But that's not the case for everything as you look on the ladder of discipline. And so I guess we're just wondering why there's no definitions for that because we feel that there needs to be definitions for everything. Because for example, under behavior inappropriate or abusive language is a level one through four, but verbal attacks is a level four. So how do we define the line between these two and who makes that call? So I feel like that just needs to be looked into more. And then we also want to talk about repercussions because we are under the impression that the school can't make repercussions less intensive, but they can make them more. And we feel as if students need to be held accountable and taught that their actions are not okay to help stop bullying. Because not only do we want to help the victim, but we also want to help the bully get help. And I, we feel that the issues will decrease when the bullies have repercussions, the correct repercussions taken. And again, Pro Crisis is a way that could help with that. Any questions regarding policies?
No, I'll just state one thing. We are going to be reviewing all that that was in your letter prior to next year. I talked to Kathy on Saturday about it. So, so all that is going to get reviewed prior to the next, or start of the next year.
And Mr. Chair, that policy 514 is required to be reviewed every year. And so it's reviewed usually June, July, so that when, when it goes into the student handbook, it's the most current, up to date. And policy 514 is also to be posted in every classroom in our, in our school. And so we need to make an inventory because there, it could possibly be that some new teachers aren't aware of that. And when rooms get cleaned in the summer and whatnot, but we need to make sure that those policies, that policy in particular is posted in the classrooms.
Next thing with a point that I would like to bring up was more of like a safety and confidentiality in our school. Some of the points I wrote down was all the bullying that's happening or happened already in the school. There's either little, little or to no procedures following after that. This is leading the victims, they're being scared. There, there's kids in our school that are scared to come to school. There's kids sitting next to bullies. This is an obvious issue that we're having. The, as like Bailey said, the procedures and the things stated, they're vague. How can we determine the differences? How can we make sure our kids are safe? And our kids, it takes a lot of courage to report something, especially when kids are feeling scared. And we need to work on somehow making our kids feel comfortable to come to, an adult to come to a reporter or something and also build that trust to make sure that whatever they are reporting is going to get followed through with. As something that is being failed on is following through with things, whatever in the process that is happening, something is getting messed up. Confidence is going to increase if we have decisions and reporting is following through with. Because what I'm seeing honestly is trust. Trust is being broken with students, staff and parents here with the bullying. As we can see that our numbers are decreasing with staff and students. I can't think of the last new student in our school, in my grade specifically. But bullying is a big issue that's happening. It's making our numbers decrease with our staff and our students. It's a problem. They don't feel comfortable, listen to, safe. That's what I have.
Anyone have any questions for, for tonight? All right, with that, well, thank you for coming in and addressing the board.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, could I just make a comment?
Yeah, absolutely.
I was able to meet with the student council members on Friday. We met in this room from 8:30 till about 10:12. And I just want you to know how proud we should all be of the students that requested the meeting and the way that they, how, how they handled the situation with respect and with care and with concern. And as their superintendent, I couldn't be more proud of them for coming and being aware of the situation. And the other part of it is wanting to be part of the solutions. What can we do to make things right? And we talked about the bystanders with victims and bullies in the bullying program, well bullying at, at large, that the bystanders are the very largest group. And if we can also help our bystanders to take action, just like these student council members did, we will be able to make this a much better school together. And that's what we shared at that meeting as well. So I thank the student council members. And we had our K-12 social worker, Jackie yourself, was in, at that meeting as well. And Kelsey Keehoe and Rachel Schmelzer as the co-advisors of student council were also at the meeting with us. And I think there was 18 students.
We have 16, 14 were in attendance.
So 14. So again, thank you very much. And we do have a follow-up meeting scheduled for this Wednesday, I believe. Is that a goal, Kelsey?
I believe so. I think there's a few that aren't able to. I haven't heard back from a couple of people, I think have not responded to that email yet because it was right at the end there. But if that works for everybody, that's kind of the current conversation.
Because as was shared at the meeting by pretty much everybody in attendance, something has to happen now. We can't just let this wait till next year. We have to take action now. And these last six days of school need to be much better.
And I'm wondering, because the one on Friday was not shared with the school board. I don't know if I have the authority to invite the school board members, anyone that is able and willing to participate. I know the council would really appreciate you guys there as well.
Absolutely. That, that meeting is scheduled right now, tentatively scheduled for 12:11. That's lunchtime, correct?
On Wednesday.
On Wednesday, 12:11 to about 1 o'clock. And we want to make sure, that's also yearbook signing day. And do the seniors, do they, are they able to sign earlier than, than the, is it 2 o'clock that's on the schedule?
1:30.
1:30. So the meeting cannot go later than 1:30 because then we need our senior, seniors to be able to go to the yearbook signing room. So yes, please do plan on that. And if you don't hear anything back from me that's changed, that is the time and day. Wednesday, 12:11. I believe we'll need to have the meeting in room 414 because the boardroom, I don't believe will be available that day. But 12:11, you know, later than 1:30 and it's to basically bring together everything that's been discussed and, and move forward.
At that point, we couldn't have any more than either three, we can't have any more than three people there.
That is correct. So please let me know if you're planning to attend so I can keep track of the number of board members and to stop that fourth person from coming.
So I do have a question and the, I don't know who wants to answer it, but this Pro Crisis Center, it was brought up before that we were going to implement it this year. Now surrounding districts have it implemented already, correct? Whatever happened, why didn't it get implemented this year?
That's exactly what I asked these kids because it was brought to my attention and we set up a meeting and it was all planned exactly where it was going to be placed. And it was going to be placed into our 10th grade health class first. Then if it was very successful there, we were going to bring it into our eighth grade health class. And so it was all planned. I mean, we moved it forward and I would ask the kid, I asked Laney because she's the one that, you know, that brought it to us, what happened with it? Because I had thought it was put in place and nobody had shared with me that it wasn't until.
So was admin involved with that, getting that set up?
The people that were sitting at the table with us, help me girls. I was there, Mrs. Davis was there, Laney.
Me, Kelsey, Chloe, and I believe it was Alexa, yes.
Was it just we two administrators? Did we have, did we have Jackie with us or did we have Amanda with us?
Nope.
Or Jackie with us?
No.
Okay.
Well, I guess what my concern is, is we talked about it and it didn't happen and it needs to happen.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Am I allowed to respond to you, Tim?
Sure, sure.
Okay, I just want to speak out of turn. So the difference this time is that we had reached out several times and didn't really get a response near the end. At first we got a lot of response and then the last time we were told that it was going to get set up. And at this point, it was mid-January and by February, we hadn't heard anymore. And so we decided we had to table it for the year and we were going to come directly to you guys in September. That was kind of what we had decided as a council. The difference this year is we were given like one person that this was, was going to set it up and that was Jackie. And she has already started that process. So that has already started. So I just wanted to answer your question.
Thank you. Okay. All right, with that, we'll move on to reports. We start with the principals. I got it, Ryan?
Yeah, so summer programming is coming up fast here. The elementary school has many programs running through the summer. All of them will run June 13th through the 30th, Tuesday through Friday from 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. We have breakfast and lunch for all of our students and transportation for those students who live in our district. Some of the programs, we have our extended school year for our special ed students. Bridge to kindergarten is for our students who are eligible to enter kindergarten next year. And then we have targeted services, which are K-8 students who need extra support in reading, math or social skills. I'm so excited for that to start. Again, that runs through Riverside Academy in Cambridge. The elementary musical will be performed this week on May 25th. We have over 50 kids participating in that. Grades, I think it starts from third grade through sixth grade. I'm so excited to see that. There's a day performance and then an evening performance as well. All of our third grade through sixth grade students have the opportunity to participate in a pool party with their class. This was a reward to celebrate their hard work on the MCA test. Big thank you to Crane Anderson for planning this for our students. Track and Field Day was on May 16th, was a perfect day. We had cooler temperatures in the morning and warmer temperatures in the afternoon. So I want to say a big thank you to Sam Weaver for organizing this day. We will have, host another elementary carnival this year. This year, it will be on May 30th from 12:30 p.m. to 3:30 p.m. Families are welcome to join in the fun in the track area. Families who are picking up their students before 3:30 are still expected to sign their student out in the, in the elementary office. Preschool graduation for our preschool four stu, our preschool four students took place on May 18th and 19th. Big thank you to our preschool staff. They always do a fantastic job making that day special for, for our kids. And then we celebrated Staff Appreciation Week, May 9th through the 12th. There's many different things going on, but I think most people's favorite was a chance to win a prize by throwing rings on antlers on our, on our admin team. So that, that was a lot of fun. I'm sure there's some pictures floating around out there that they'll embarrass us with later on. A big thank you to the Lions Club for donating money for pizza for the staff and to Lore Life for organizing that and organizing grants for our staff as well. So thank you.
All right, anyone have any questions? All right, thank you. I didn't see Sue's report, did I?
She is out of state and she will be sending you her report, issues with technology and trying to get back to you.
I'm pretty sure it's on Drive.
Oh, is it on the Drive now?
Yep.
So, so it's there for you and she, she apologizes that she wasn't able to get it to you sooner, but it's there. And if you have any trouble locating it or need to have more information from her, she will be very happy to share that. Unless Kathy, if you've got it, if you want to read it.
Well, I can, I can read the notes that I put in the minutes from her report. Or do you want me to pull it up quick?
If you would like to pull it up.
Well, I just, I just said that Principal Davis reported on the senior class graduation information. Valedictorians are Bailey Heald, Jaren Nelson and Alexa Peterson. Salutatorian is Bryce Byer. She has a link to the senior graduating list. And then a link to the senior last days, so scheduled. The student of the quarter, fourth quarter honorees is Zach Tillman, Isaiah Voss and Brody Magard. Honory breakfast is May 25th. We will be honoring all of this year's student of the quarter honorees and parents with breakfast. State testing, MCA and MTAS timed for the student May 12th. A huge thank you to the technology department for setting up the tests. A huge lion pride thank you to all that helped with testing. Staff appreciation week was May 8th. We had a fun game at the staff development day. Had a celebration cake in the lounge, served beer floats and played games for prizes throughout the week to celebrate our great staff.
All right, well, thank you. All right, with that, we'll move on to Superintendent Belshan.
Well, let's start with some really good news and that is we received a rebate, a fuel rebate from Federated Co-ops for $498.55. And then on the backside of that, we actually received our dividend check also from Federated Co-ops. And that amount came in at $732.22. And so, so it's always great that we can be a part of Federated Co-ops, keeping our business local and of course, being, being a member of the co-op, then we receive those dividends. It's a win-win for, for everyone. We did also have a meet, confer meeting and talked about different situations. And I'm hoping that maybe some of the board members will talk about that too. One of the, one of the big conversations was around committees. And our admin team has been discussing the way of revamping our committee structure. And, and from that meet, confer meeting and from board members' input as well, as well as our admin team who are looking at the bullying prevention committee needs to. to be restructured. And through that restructuring, um, we would like to have student representation on that, that committee as well. So, that's, um, that's coming up, um, and is in, in the works. Um, we also, um, had meeting with, um, with our School Resource Officer, Dan Schultz, and Deputy Dan, and with Amanda DeFlemineck, our council, and Jackie Brussell, our, our, um, school count, um, school's director. And that meeting with them, um, this last week was prior to meeting with the board council. And, and talking about what we do have going on in, in the school. And so, again, sharing, sharing, um, sharing the, the, the feedback from those experts on in our school on what they're hearing from the kids. And, um, our kids are not feeling supported. And, and, and that's where we need to make sure that, um, that we're, um, making sure that we have that follow-through. Um, Natalie hit that one, and that was dear to my heart, because it's the follow-through that I feel is, is, um, the most important. And one of the areas that we learned about in our OVEAS programming was, um, that need to reach back to the victims. So, you know, you, you take care of the situation, there are, you know, there's action, appropriate action that's taken, but we need to check in with the victim, um, victims and the bullies both. You know, how's it going? You know, just making sure that we put that on our calendars to have those revisits with kids after there's been, um, an incident that's been reported, that's been investigated, and that has been completely finished in that regard. We always have to keep going back to the kids. And that's, that's what we, um, have run short of time to do. Um, and again, it's, you know, we have to take the time to do that piece of it. Um, I was, um, very happy to be able to attend the Dollars for Scholars, um, program yesterday. There were eight students that were highlighted and honored with scholarships, and also, somebody who was there, it was, was it twenty-some thousand or thirty-some thousand dollars? Does anybody remember what was said at the beginning? Thirty-eight thousand dollars for those eight students that, um, went through the process of, um, completing scholarship requests. And I spoke with some of the, um, some of the officers afterwards, and they said there were about five kids that still, if they would have finished the process, they would have also been able to receive, um, scholarships, and that they had been approached many times to, you know, get your paperwork finished, and, but, um, so, the, the kids, we just, again, need to be sharing with our kids, make sure to, to actually apply for scholarships, because ours, our community is super generous. And again, being able to speak with some of the, um, some of the generous people that make those scholarships happen, um, that was part of the, the fun time for me last night, too. And then, um, also baccalaureate occurred at, um, six o'clock last night in our auditorium, and, um, it was Lewis Lake Community Church that, um, actually presented that program for us, and they are also on the schedule for next year as well, and they do a very, very nice job of connecting with our kids. And, um, I just went, um, up to them afterwards and shared that, um, it was so, um, powering to hear the strong voices singing in our auditorium yesterday, when you have so many people from the community as well as the students. So, that's what I have to share with you tonight, unless there's something else that you want to ask about.
Questions for Kathy and Nate? All right, thank you. All right, with that, we'll move on, uh, board members, boards, any board members? Anything to report on tonight?
Just that, me, and Cory and I attended the retirement tea, which I thought was really nice. Thank you, Kathy, for doing that. The food was a lot, a lot of food. So, hopefully, next year, we'll get more retirees to come back.
It was a very nice event, um, yeah, it was well put together. Discussing the past and having our retirees there, it was nice to see them there. Um, like Kathy said, I wish we would have had a whole bunch more, um, there. It would have made it a very, very wonderful event if that would have happened. Um, yeah, it's been a busy time for the board. We've had, uh, a meet and confer, um, if you want to elaborate on that. Um, actually, who was there? It was M.I. and you, so, yeah. Um, great discussion between them. Like Kathy said, it was a committee discussion. Um, definitely had some discussion about the, some security concerns in here, which was, um, good discussion to have about that, about, uh, dropping doors in this school, and it seems to be a pretty big deal, or pretty big problem, ongoing problem that, uh, needs to be remedied, or what we're going to do about it, and having those discussions with maintenance staff on what doors are open and what doors are shut, and when we're locked, and that type of thing. So, it was, uh, good conversation with them on that.
And Nate, um, the, um, action was taken the very next morning, so that's already improved also, um, through, um, through the communication with the different departments, and, um, it's also been communicated out with all of our staff. Anytime you see an open door, you close it.
Yep, I'll just go with yes. But, that's what I have.
All right, yeah, and also, with the meet and confer meeting, we also had the Student School Board Committee meeting.
Oh, yeah.
We had, uh, two applicants for that. They were very good applicants. And is there any information on that?
I believe, um, what was shared with me, and that's why I had to take it off the agenda, is that, um, we're waiting for a discussion between the students, or between, um, I, I believe that there needed to be some input from our Student School Board Member Cole, her just, and because of baseball and being so successful, um, right now, that, um, thing has not been available to actually set up that part of the meeting. So, I'm assuming it will happen tomorrow, and then we will have a new Student School Board, uh, member at the June meeting.
Perfect. Okay, yeah, and I guess I'll just, um, we're still ongoing with all the negotiations, and all three groups are getting negotiated at this time, so, that's kind of ongoing process. Any other board members for tonight? All right, with that, we will, uh, move on to Student School Board Members.
Okay, so, a lot of my stuff's already been covered, so I'll just briefly talk about a few things, but, um, baseball has a game in Evis right now, so I was, my Cole's unable to be here. And softball, our season just ended last Thursday. For those of you that don't know, the program has been in the works of building. We had a new coach this year. We ended the season with a six-and-thirteen record, which doesn't sound the best, but it's actually really good compared to what we've done in the past. We'll be having a banquet coming up here at some point. And then, Mrs. Belshan touched on Dollars for Scholars, but I also wanted to mention that there was a total of twenty-four scholarships given. So, big thank you to everyone who's able to make that possible. And then, um, baccalaureate service, she touched on that as well, that was Lewis Lake Church, so I want to thank them for being a touch of that as well. And then, on Wednesday, there'll be the yearbook signing party, and for those of you that don't know what this consists of, it is yearbook handout. People can walk around, the concession stands open, sign each other's yearbooks, and there's a bunch of games, and it's basically just a good time for students to enjoy. And then, elementary students had track and field last Tuesday. I know I and other students were able to help out with that, and from what we saw, I think elementary students had blessed. And that was all I had.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Bailey?
I'm going to touch on what Cole, um, um, mentioned also. Um, he did talk about quite a few things in here, but the few things that I did, uh, go to, um, for, the one that I did go to was the band, uh, the band concert. Um, that was a very, very, very good event, um, for people who did not go to it. That was a very good event. Um, the, for a first-year band teacher, um, to pull all the students together for one, um, song, um, that they played together, um, the Scooby-Doo song that they played was absolutely amazing, that they, and he intermixed all the, um, different grades together, so there was, uh, different students, you know, it wasn't just all separated out, everybody was all mixed in. It was a very, very good concert. Um, I just got to congratulate all the kids that were in, uh, band. I did not attend the choir concert, but, um, yeah, so, I did want to touch on that, so...
Choir was just as good.
Good, I'm sure it was.
Yes, and, and we were very fortunate, and, uh, many of the choir, uh, students were able to perform at the retirement tea also for us, and that was, um, very much appreciated as well.
All right, and, um, with that, I think it's worth noting, thank you for being in the board, Bailey.
It'll be her last meeting with us, so...
Okay, with that, we'll move on to other district employees. Hang on, anything to report on tonight? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Uh, can I get a motion to approve, um, item seven, the approval of the minutes, uh, A, B, and C? Motion by member Beck, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by member Heinz, uh, discussion on that? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? None, motion passes, man on the seat. All right, so, move on to personnel. Before I ask for this motion, is there any that we want to go on separate on here, or we want to take this one group?
Should we divide out the resignations and the...
Yeah, we could do the hires.
Hires?
Okay, we'll do it that way. So, can I get a motion to approve personnel items, A, B, C, D, E?
G. Do you want to have that?
There's a, wow, let's do it as a, G.
H, and then add in a K.
G, H, and A, K. So, that would be all the resignations.
H is a higher.
Yeah.
G.
G, K.
Okay, so, we're taking all the resignations first. Can I get a motion to approve that? Motion by member Heinz, can I get a second? Second, second by member Peterson, uh, discussion on that? Are we, uh, having exit interviews?
We can. We don't have...
There's a lot of resignations, and it's very, very concerning.
Oh, but you shared with us their letters, and the majority of them have a reason to leave.
Yes.
I mean, I don't know how much personal, I should say, but we still should do exit interviews.
Absolutely.
See what caused them to stay in the outside of the district. A few of them did say they would do exit interviews, so...
Well, I mean, it's just, we got, what, seven, eight resignations? It's just concerning.
Have you all read their letters?
I just feel exit interviews should be a, a must.
I usually do with students, but again, remember, that's one, that's one area that, um, we have to have a more formal plan, but then we also need people to follow the plan, because right now, um, people don't, don't have, they don't actually participate in an exit, exit, um, interview unless they want to, if that's a, a, a good way of saying that, that. Sometimes, sometimes, um, we aren't aware that, um, people are leaving, that students are leaving our district until they don't show up, and then we have a, a record transfer request of their student records. And so, in that case, um, people have left without following all the protocols of, you know, getting grades from their teachers and, and turning in, um, the, the books, and so, it's, um, and we can call, and that's what we do, we call parents and say, we need to have you come in. And so, that, that program, and I am a real believer that we have to have those conversations. We need to sit down and talk with people and find out, you know, why they're, why they're leaving, and if there is something that we should be aware of to improve our school, or if it is, and this is what most of it is, when they come in and talk with me, um, they, they're moving. So, the family is making a move, and they're really excited about that move, and, you know, and so, I can be excited with them, um, as well. And, and there are other cases where I've been made aware of the situation, and, you know, and we, we go on, but again, um, people have that, they have that, that right, um, to leave. And I, I will share with you, as Kathy has, has mentioned, I thank you for that. Um, these resignations, um, there are, I believe, all but, but two, maybe, that, uh, that, that their family is changing, um, their career choice is changing, um, they, um, there have been only, I believe, two that say it's for higher wages.
It's still important to do the exit interviews, so, thank you, Kathy.
Yep, I will make sure that happens with our, with our staff.
All right, any other discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, man on the seat. Okay, now, can I get a motion to approve, uh, personnel items of H, I, and J? So, I'm with, motion by member Peterson, can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, second by member Schroeder, discussion on that? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes, man on the seat. All right, move on to the action items, uh... Uh, item number nine, uh, stable of made claims.
Motion to approve made claims in the amount of four hundred fifty-one thousand, six hundred sixty-two dollars and seventy cents.
All right, motion by member Canons, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by member Heinz, any discussion on that? All right, we'll do a roll call, hold on that. Uh, member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Heinz?
Aye.
Member Beck?
Aye.
Member Canons?
Aye.
Member Schroeder?
Aye.
I will vote aye as well, motion passes, man on the seat. All right, item number ten, can I get a motion to approve the revenue expense, fund balance status report?
We need to list a number here. Or is it just a report? It's just a report we're going to approve. Motion to approve the report.
Motion by member Canons, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by member Schroeder, uh, discussion needed on that?
You sure we don't draw them up for that?
Yes, this, this is, um, this is what you receive, um, like, quarterly, just so you can see where we're at with our revenues and our expenditures. So, it's a report, it's an informational report, but you actually take action to accept it.
Right, accepting the report.
Right, right, and so, it's just, again, um, keeping you abreast of the, um, the, again, the revenues and the, um, expenses. And so, for example, um, looking at, looking at our general fund and the expenses, um, I always have you look at that percentage year-to-date. And so, this, this, um, report was as of the end of April, so that means it's, you know, we've got just one quarter left, and our general fund, the expenses are at seventy-three percent, so that's right on track. And, um, it's hoping to indicate that there might be a little bit of extra, um, that's not spent. Um, the actual general fund, that the revenues match up perfectly with that seventy-five percent. So, seventy-five percent of the revenues have come in, seventy-three percent of the expenses have been expensed out. So, that's what I want to draw your attention to, and, um, and then the rest of this is all of our funds, you know, Fund, Fund Two, Food Services, you can see, and, and just remember that on the, the report, um, the numbers that are in parentheses, those numbers, that's, um, revenue. So, even though you think of, you know, the parentheses as maybe being in the red, but that is actually revenue. And then, the, um, the other report is the, is the actual, um, expenses. And so, it might look a little strange to you, um, the expenses, the zero-six account, the building fund, that would be in, in reference to the bond. Okay, the bond, and that's why that number is very, very large for expenses, and it's also very large for the, the revenue, um, and that's already been figured into, um, into our accounting practices. And, um, with, with, um, the only other one to maybe draw attention to is, um, the Fund Twenty-One, which is our student activity fund. And with, with, the only other one to maybe draw attention to is the Fund 21, which is our student activity funds. And now the student activity funds, they're all governed by the different after-school extracurricular activities, but they still have to be reported in our school official finance, financial picture. And so the, the actual revenues are at 118% of what was expected for student activity. So that means fundraisers, it means, you know, bringing in the, the admissions, all of that is higher than... Okay, and then the student activity, the actual expense side of it is at 102%. So again, that's looking really healthy and that's a kudos to our, to our students and their fundraising efforts and our extracurriculars. And that's all that I would really address tonight for you, but, you know, take a look at that and again, you know, we want it to be about that 75% and if it's, you know, if its expenses less than 75%, that's really good.
All right, any other questions? Kathy have that report? Ready now? All right, with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're not really poking you up on this, opposing the report, so. We can do a roll call if you want. Member Schroeder?
Aye.
Member Heinz?
Aye.
Member Beck?
Aye.
Member Heinz?
Aye.
Member Peterson? I'll vote aye as well. All right, motion passing unanimously. All right, hold on to 11, can I get a motion to approve the Bond Referendum Site Excavation Improvement Package? Motion by member Heinz, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by member Heinz.
Right here.
And we have Gary Lovitz from Jensen here to present that information.
I did try and make it small for you. I did recap what we've done for the bids in the first three graphs, so it's all in the same document there. On the new business, we, obviously we've reduced the scope for the site package. We added some stuff in for that little ball field out here that we've taken out of the scope. That was requested a little late. And we also are going to build the track at the same elevation without the three-foot sand section being built up. And that's getting us closer to our 970, 983,000 budget, so. The reason I'm bringing this to you tonight is I'd like to at least move forward with at least the, the portion that would be done for the playground and the North Trail, because the playground, I know Ryan has new equipment arriving on September 1st. And I'm still working with the rest of the district employees. There's, some are a little concerned about not having the three-foot sand section built into the track area, but I don't know where we're going to get additional dollars from because the other parts are over budget as well. As I move forward, we have the second for the back page. We are actually reducing scope in some other areas that we found. Temperature controls, there's some duplication and some changes, I've got 100,000, close to 100,000 off of them. We removed the metal and wood shop air handlers, which is just serving the shops. We were, just so you know, we did do the ventilation with cooling for the classroom areas, for the equity in that area. And then the auditorium rooftop unit and cleaning of existing ductwork, which is 197,000. A little bit more from the general contractor for structural at those air handlers and then seeing who's in the classrooms are replacing lighting. Overall, I've identified about 787,100 in savings. But again, I'm, I think there's still more discussion we need to do with the facility committee meetings or something like that, rather than full board before we proceed. But I would like to proceed with the, at least the playground portion of the site package, just to get them moving. The athletic track, it's really honestly too late to do anything yet this year anyway. I kind of thought it would be with the paving, because you need, I think it's 35 days of cure time before they can lay that rubberized coating on top. And here we are, you know, almost June 1st already, but we've got bids out and budgeted, so. Tonight, there's a lot more information in this sheet, obviously, than you probably care about, but it'll be going to more committee meetings. I think Kathy, we're going to go with finance facility committee meetings and work it back up. Possibly in June, but it may make that June 19th or with school ending, I don't know how the committees meet and everything, so. The rest will come due eventually, but I want to make sure I'm following the proper channels before it makes it to the full board too, so. And I'm sure some of you will be in those meetings, so. I did bring the site improvements, it went back to the Larson Engineering. He, I asked specifically the question, all right, so this has lasted 30 years at this elevation. It is, current situation is not level all the way around, it would be level and, but, and there would be some better drainage, be flat all the way around and compliant, but a little less desirable pavement section. I mean, if you, the soil boring that we did this spring said that we should probably do three feet of sand fill, which opened up a whole lot more worms with removing fencing and then having to replace it and stuff like that, so. The civil engineer said if it lasted 30 years, the improvements we do now should last 30 years. The sand section, will it last 40 or 50? I see goes, it's going to be hard in the soil we have here to prevent cracking in the pavement, but, you know. Is this, I asked him specifically, is what we're doing, removing that three-foot section, is it going to be a five-year fix? He goes, no, it'll be a 20 to 30-year fix, so. That made me feel a lot better because I don't want to do something wrong or do have to do it again, so.
So how about the drainage?
The drainage around...
Are we going to do everything or just, just the track?
Nope, we're still doing a lot of drainage throughout. It's just the track that, the cost went up so much with that three-foot sand section. So they're still doing drainage around the track even and there's major drainage in other areas.
So you went and got it re-engineered, you took some of the scope off, but did we give them more bids?
No. If you'd like next avenue, if you'd like it to be rebid, then we'd have to go through rebid process, which would include bid advertisement, rebidding.
Because we only got one bid on this project.
Why can't we bid the playground separately?
We could, if we can find somebody that is...
Why don't we just give this contractor the bid when you don't even know what a local contractor could do that playground for?
I don't know how to pronounce the name, but Malaka, H-J-O-R-T, I think it's yours.
Yours.
Okay, he was here at the pre-bid meeting and he thought he was going to bid this project. He said he was too busy to do any portion of it, but I can try and rebid it with just the playground area.
I just, I just don't think that it's a fair shake for anybody. If we're already looking into not even doing these improvements until next year...
Except for the playground.
Except for the playground, obviously, yes, I understand that. But if we're, if we're still looking into next year, why wouldn't we rebid this whole project anyways? Yes, you did save 434,500, but we're still 914,158 over. And, you know, I understand contractors are busy now, but I, I don't know, I don't know how to attack that.
It's a, I was trying to do the valley engineering major strain.
I just don't like singling one contractor out and just handing them, handing it to them.
Sure.
That's not, I, I don't, I think that that's unfair. I understand we're working into June, so I, I don't know how to look at it now. Are you going to get a bid? I have no idea. But how long is the bid process?
Well, we have to advertise a minimum of two weeks. I don't remember what the newspaper, was that Wednesdays?
Mondays and Tuesdays.
Mondays and Tuesdays?
So if we were to get it in tomorrow afternoon by four, we should be okay to have it run this week, Thursday on the weekend, the upcoming weekend.
Possible. And then you advertise, advertise for two weeks and then probably have an onsite pre-bid meeting and, I mean, it's not rocket science. The hard part is I'd have to break out the bid documents only showing just the playground area for this section.
Because playground's been engineered already.
Correct, it all has.
There's a plan in place for that, that you could handle.
I could take out certain sheets that don't affect like the track area and some of the other drainage and the North Trail paving, which should work.
My own.
I just...
I'd like to see more of that.
Yeah, unfortunately, I know it pushes us back, but, and...
If it's a smaller project than like that, you've got a lot more local people.
And the, and the, the flip side of that is, is they can still bid that and include that into their work schedule, you know. If, if they're aware of that or contact them and tell them that this is coming out separately.
Oh, I will.
And, you know, go that route.
So with that...
Then I wouldn't recommend doing anything. I'll just push forward with the rebid of this. And we'll, maybe we'll even do ventilation yet too. I mean, I guess we had three mechanical bids, so that's pretty good there, all really closed.
I feel a lot better with that.
Okay.
So with that, we actually need to amend our motion because the motion was to approve, so.
So I know, I was thinking about what I was supposed to say. We're not doing anything with it then?
No, we'll postpone.
Definitely.
Definitely, yes.
Postpone definitely, so I just say amend, postpone definitely.
Well, when are we going to, when are we going to talk about it again, that's the thing?
November 19th.
19th of June?
Well, we haven't bid in the 19th of June, we should.
We should.
Yeah, we get it out for two weeks.
I mean, really, me doing, getting the documents, that's not really difficult.
The thing is, it's going to need to be on that.
It has to be on that meeting.
Yeah, we have time, if it's two weeks out, it's 1st to 27th of May today.
So just postpone to our...
June 19th, okay, so amend to...
Postpone until further discussion at our June 19th meeting.
Okay, so I'm going to amend the site excavation improvement package to postpone definitely.
To our June 19th.
To our June 19th board meeting, okay.
Correct.
There we go.
All right, so we have amended motion, can I get a second on that?
Second.
All right, second by member Heinz. Any more discussion on that? All right, with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The amended motion passed, passes unanimously. All right, thank you.
Yep, I'll see you June 19th with other bids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, move on to action item number 12. Take a motion to approve the electric bus 2022 clean school bus rebate program. So, motion by member Schroeder, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, member Heinz, discussion on that?
I'm going to defer to, to Cory, but I will share with you...
Do you have those numbers?
I do, I have everything here, Cory has. But I, I do want to share that we received an email today and that's from, from our sales representative of North Central Bus Company. Okay, and he says, "Good morning, just an update on production as of today. If ordered, the electric bus would be built late November or early December of 2023. Delivery would most likely be January of 2024. And then if you have any other questions, you know, feel free to, to reach out." North Central is the bus company that we would be purchasing the bus from. And if you recall, the original grant rebate program is for $395,000. And the way it was shared with us is of that 395,000, 375,000 would be for the bus and then 20,000 for the charging system to, to keep the bus in operation. And so that's the, that's the bare bones of the actual grant. And now Cory's been really instrumental in this, there's been a whole lot of work over the last months and visits with Eastern Energy has been at the table with us, North Central Bus has been at the table with us. Cory, Mark, Sherrod, Becky, and myself have been at those meetings. And Cory and Mark also made a visit to Eastern Harbor School District where they have an electric bus and were able to take a tour and get all kinds of information from the transportation director there.
And I think Kathy, after we had everything gone through with the cost of the bus, the charging system and infrastructure, which would include bringing prepaid power to the current bus garage for charging, what did we come up with for...
The, the total cost, the total cost would be, let me see here now, 455,981.17.
And then we minus that out for an estimated shortfall?
The shortfall is 60,000.
Right. So in other terms there, you're looking at basically a new bus for 60,000. That's what we come up short with, that's what we're going to have to work with. But that's a new bus that only works on 15 degrees or above, correct? Nope. No. It worked in sub-freezing weather. Yes. Yep. They assured us that the mileage that it's going to be able to do daily without having to reach, be charged from the, would be monitoring sufficient cover and route AM and PM. But, so that bus has to be kept in the heated shop, correct? Uh, not necessarily. Is it charging session more if you're sitting outside or something? Yeah, yeah, it would require more time to charge. It's all based on the ambient temperatures. That battery has, they kept at optimal, I believe it was between 60 and 70 degrees. Battery has its own heating and cooling, so to speak, on it. So in the long run, like you say, it, it will do the route and actually does have a, another heating system on it, some, or, I don't know how you would put it, an extra heating unit, an auxiliary one. So if it was cold, it does have a diesel fire auxiliary heater on it for heating the cab, not the bus. But not the battery pack in it. But it is a, you know, straightforward, this is basically an experiment or part of the experiment is what it will be held on to.
Cutting-edge technology.
Sounds like I expected an experiment.
Do we know what it'll increase the electric, the electric bill?
Yeah. Uh, actually, we did find that out and what was it, East Central shot us a number that was higher than, because they don't even have, because it's going to be on op peak, it'll be basically an op peak system that charges off, so it's reduced rate, I know. Don't hold me to this, I think that number was somewhere's around, I think it was 1,800 to 2,000 is what the cost was.
Annual?
Yeah.
1,800 to 2,000?
Yeah, when you started figuring, hell, it was a lot less than usual, so. And then you've got to remember maintenance is zero, there is no, you don't have to change oil, you don't have anything like that.
What happens when the battery doesn't work anymore?
Uh, there's an eight-year warranty on it.
So and they'll just replace it at no cost to the district?
It will be covered under that warranty, yeah, for that eight years, so.
What about when that eight years is up? Do you know what a new battery is costing?
They don't know.
That's unknown for everybody.
They, they don't know, but...
And for what it's worth, you've got to look at the life expectancy of the bus overall too.
Can we have it for eight years?
It's not much beyond that. What's, uh, the asking propane bus about, how much does that cost? Can you remember roughly? 127,000 roughly.
I think so.
No, it's more than that.
How about if we maybe break this all down for you too? Okay, so remember I said that the bus through the grant rebate, it was 375,000 and then 20,000 for... Uh, okay, so remember I said that the bus through the grant rebate, it was three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars and then twenty thousand for the charging system? Okay, the bus actually is coming in at um, at by round, three hundred eighty-one thousand. So that's pretty close. They really have come down on that. But the part that they don't tell you is that we have to pay, um, you know, we have to pay sales tax on it. And the sales tax is another twenty-six thousand. That's not accounted for. And then we do have, the charging station is in with the bus, um, amount of another twenty-one thousand. So that's why the bus actually comes in at that four hundred twenty-eight thousand instead of the three ninety-five. But we've been working with um, Eastern and and we um, have, you know, shared with them that, again, they're an electric service. And this is, this is, it, this Clean Bus Act, it's big. They already have now started the new grant proposals for next year. And so if you go out, um, if you go out to the Clean Bus, um, Clean Bus, Clean School Bus, C V, C S P, or if you go out to E P A, it's out there. And so that's the actual cost of of the bus. And then um, we we have rebates and donations from Eastern. So Eastern is going to, they are going to kick in eleven thousand five hundred dollars of rebate and basic money for advertising. Because this is, this is, um, you know, again, that cutting edge. So really, that shortfall, instead of it being sixty thousand, it really is um, like forty-eight-five.
So that twenty-six thousand sales tax is included in that sixty thousand shortfall?
Um, yes, yes. So that's that sixty, or that twenty-six thousand is why the bus is four hundred twenty-seven thousand instead of four hundred twenty.
I didn't think you paid taxes on school vehicles and.
I didn't think so, but I did the same thing though, Casey. I thought, we shouldn't be paying tax, you know? And so I looked at the propane bus and diesel buses, and yes, we pay tax on that, and it, you know, it's that certain percentage or whatever. But then also because, um, so right now, we have to have um, three, what's called three-phase electric into the bus garage. And that's where, again, Eastern, they will bring, they will bring the electricity, that three-phase, to the corner of the building itself. So across Highway twenty-three, that's where a transformer is. They'll bring that in for the school district. But then to actually hook up the three-phase training um, inside the bus garage, then we have um, we we checked with both Belford Electric. Um, who we do a lot of business with. And then also, um, we checked with Melrose Electric, who has been doing the work on our um, school projects, our our referender projects. And so we have, um, it's going to be eighteen thousand two hundred fifty dollars to actually um, hook up everything with the three-phase um, electric inside the bus garage. To guarantee that we'd be able to um, charge, charge the bus. And so the bus, um, right now, it could be inside the the garage. And if it's inside the garage, then that temperature will always keep the bus um, at the temp it needs to be. But they also have guaranteed that if we have it sitting outside, um, they're going to, I think this is still part of the plan. That there would be like a a doggy door, you know, where on the one corner, like it would be the um, southwest corner. You'd be able to bring that, the the charging unit through the, through the building and to the, to the bus there. Um, and so that's, that's also been um, shared with us that it it is doable. Um, we for sure, uh, when we, uh, if we are to start using this bus in mid-winter, and that's when the, when that delivery of the bus would be. You know, I would certainly think that we'd want to start it on a like shorter routes, um, like maybe, you know, all of our in-town kids and see how, how they like that, too. I was also asked to um, check with Spire Credit Union. They are who we have all of our business with. And so made a couple of phone calls. And there is um, the possibility, you know, I asked, you know, could it either be that you sponsor, help sponsor this electric bus? I mean, again, cutting, cutting-edge um, technology. We're the only school district in central Minnesota um, that that has been awarded the the grant. So it's, it is kind of a a big deal. Um, and so at this point, we talked about a loan for the shortfall. And they would be willing to discuss with us if we don't want to take it out of our school um, general fund. If we would want to go um, with, into a loan with them, they would guarantee the lowest um, loan rate that they possibly could. And um, a a number that was thrown out there was um, you know, that five percent. And I don't know for sure what the going radar for lo- loans rate now. And then as far as the sponsorship, it's gone to the marketing team. And to see if it could be one of the um, sponsorships of um, of Spire Credit Union. Where they would basically provide some of the funds that would help to cover that shortfall. Um, in lieu of, you know, that free advertising again. And um, having David Danstolz would be one of the first people to have a ride in the electric bus. And so we're working on, you know, finding other ways to um, to um, get donations or sponsorships for for that shortfall. But and me, I, at the meetings, I take all the notes, but it's, it is a bit over my head, too. So I rely on Cory and Mark. And again, Cory, if you want to maybe just share a little bit about the Eastern Harbor School District um, visit. Because they've had one and it's been working well.
Yeah, Mark and I went down one day for that. Uh, we were able to take a ride with them on that. Uh, I did ask the one mechanic at one time what they had to do with it. Over the course of the, I believe it's a year and a half that they've had it so far. He's had one uh, coolant pump that went bad and that was it. Um, I asked him about brakes and stuff like that, maintenance wise. Um, his response on the brakes was uh, his belief was they probably will never have to replace brakes for the lifetime of that bus because it's got regenerative braking in it. Where it actually, when you slow down, it's actually recharging the batteries. So. Um, lots of new technology in there. Um, a lot of it's even beyond means changing day-to-day. Um. I guess at some point in time, somebody's gotta try something new and, you know, I'm looking at the fact that uh, you know, it's three hundred ninety-five thousand of the, of our taxpayer money that was already allotted. And if we weren't the ones that took it, somebody else was going to, so.
What's uh, what's Mark's recommendation as our transportation supervisor?
He's on board with it, too.
He's on board and um, the uh, the actual application process um, um, is scheduled for tomorrow. Um, to finish that process if um, if all goes well at the meeting tonight. Um, we did ask for an extension. Um, it was due April twenty-eighth. But we needed to get more um, information and um, had to get those quotes bits for that extra work um, for this um, charging station. And and this, the three-phase charging station is to help guarantee with our colder winters. Um, that the bus would be operating just the way it needs to be, because otherwise it's uh, generation two, I think is what they called it. Um, and that's, that's why that twenty thousand um, would cover, would cover um, you know, a, a, I don't know, lower voltage? Is that the right term, Cory? Lower sustaining charging unit, but.
I don't know exactly. Yeah, it would be, it would be more of a three-phase, single-phase service than it would require, but it would require, you know, what voltage you go with. The actual longer timeframe it takes to charge.
And again, when you think of a bus, um, you know, costing that forty-eight thousand six hundred dollars. And knowing that um, with the off-peak electric power. And knowing that um, the the maintenance on it should be very, very limited, low. Um, and, you know, it just seems like we should move forward. But again, um, we know that this came over the amount that the grant actually stipulated for us.
What uh, what if any stipulations are in that grant? How many years do we have to have this bus in service?
I think I shared before, I think it's five years. And so that's the other piece of it. After five years, you could sell the bus if you, if we were so inclined.
Can you clarify? I might have missed it. The forty-eight thousand, is that to purchase the new bus? Or is that what it costs to run the bus a year?
No, that's for the total amount.
That's what we're sure.
The expense, expense um, minus uh, grants proceeds.
Got it. Okay, I was thinking anyway. Okay.
Um, so where are we coming up with the forty-eight thousand, Kathy?
Sir, the school district listed that for at least five years from the day of delivery is what's in the, in the rebate program. Well, and that's, that's what we're coming to you with is, um, do we, you know, do we continue? Do we continue to to move forward? And and we will continue to look for um, that forty-eight thousand dollars. Um, you know, we still have, um, you know.
Well, I'm a little apprehensive to approve taking this grant if we don't know if we can afford the forty-eight thousand, but, I mean, where's it gonna come from?
It would come from our general fund.
All right, but I'd like to see how that looks on our budget.
Well, and here's, here's what we would ask our business manager to do for us, too. Um, is that um, if we didn't feel that the district was healthy enough to afford that out of the general fund. Then we would go through a leasing program or through um, a loan. And that's, that is what we had done with our um, with our propane buses. Um, so we were on a leasing program. And at this time, I believe we have one year left on a lease for the most recent bus. I shouldn't say most recent. It would be the first propane bus. Because the last two propane buses came out of S and P's. So there is, there isn't any loan on those.
Yes.
And so, um, do I feel confident that we can afford this forty-eight thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars? I would say yes, because we're still working on, um, you know, fundraising. And I know that we would be able to 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 lease, to um, you know, with our investments, be able to go out and um, get either a short, you know, a loan. Or to um, to lease, to put into a lease program. But it seems, this seems like a small amount, though, to be putting into a lease, a the, a lease program, to be honest with you. You know, when we look at, looked at our other buses, the cheapest bus that we've ordered in the last five years has been a hundred three, a hundred four thousand dollars.
Okay. Any other questions on that?
We have any buses close to being taken out of the road?
Yes, sir, we do. And that's, that's why we've been, you know, replacing in our fleet.
Mm-hmm. We have one that's close now?
We do. I don't recall what number it is. Do you, Cory?
I wish I could tell you, but I don't, I don't call me on it, but I think it's number nine, because what, what uh, Mark was talking, they were asking.
Any other questions on that? All right. So just so we're clear on this, this motion is to basically accept the grant and move forward with the purchase of this bus. So everyone's aware of that? All right. Well, with that, I think we need to do a little call vote on that. Uh, member, um, actually just answer with yes or no on this. Yes is your in favor, no your against. Uh, member Beck?
Yes.
Uh, member Canings?
No.
Member Schroeder?
Yes.
Uh, member Peterson?
Yes.
Member Hines?
Yes.
And I will vote no. All right, so it was four to two yesterday. All right, so motion passes four to two. All right, with that, we're on to uh, item number thirteen, gave a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three QCOM annual review.
So I'm over.
Motion by member Canings, gave a second.
Second.
Second by member Peterson. Uh, discussion on that.
I'll try to make it really quick for us. Um, we met all day on um, May seventeenth with our QCOM council. And the purpose was to bring the annual um, business of the QCOM um, program to um, to a closure. Um, the structure of it, there are three categories for our QCOM program. It's goals, uh, teacher evaluation and P L C participation. And just to remind you that um, the QCOM program is funded both by Levy and State Aid. And it's based on per A D M, so average daily membership, or in other words, the number of kids that we have in our school. We have um, forty-eight teachers that were um, that were a part of the program. And this year, we're very happy to say that in the goals category, that um, we achieved our goals for both the district-wide. And for um, for individual students and the bulk levels. It was um, a great year for goal achievement. And the breakdown of that is, um, well, the breakdown of that is um, two hundred fifty dollars each. For making sure that we're obtaining our goals um, for the the district and again, individual teachers. And this, um, our school has had our goals developed around the area of reading, literacy, for the last um, probably six, eight years. And so every, all the goals are built on that reading, bringing up reading achievement. And we have chosen to use like our FAST testing and N W E A testing. Because that's local benchmark testing that we have control over in the school. So if we see something that doesn't seem right with kids, then we could actually ask them to retest. To make sure that um, that the data that's being presented to us is accurate. Um, the the teacher evaluation piece um, was also very successful. All of our teachers, and this is state statute, that that has to be done um, with the the protocols in place. Of, you know, probationary teachers being um, evaluated more frequently than um, our tenure teachers. And that, um, everything was very successful with our teacher evaluation. And then the third part is the P L C participation. And that's where you may be aware that our teachers come in early on Wednesdays to Wednesdays a month. Plus our um, Mondays, our non-school Mondays, um, those teacher in-service days. Um, there's a portion, a hundred five minutes, I think it's a hundred five minutes every Monday that's devoted to um, P L Cs are professional learning communities where the teachers are working again um, towards our reading achievement. And making sure that um, that we have good programs in place. And that there's continual learning and teaching and instruction that goes along um, for for our our teachers as well. So all of that was good. Um, we do have um, we do have ladder positions, career ladder. And that means in order for this program to be successful, we needed to have um, P L C facilitators. So we have two of those, one at the elementary level and one at the secondary level. We also um, need to have peer observers. So that the teachers in our school are observed by the principals, but they're also, um, they're also observed by by peers. And that's part of QCOM, um, the QCOM program. And so those uh, those two areas, um, there are terms of office or terms of their their term of, you know, two or three years, depending on which of those positions. Um, has to be, um, has to be tenure teachers that are in those roles. There's an actual application program that goes through um, for that to to be in place. And so, great news, everything is in place for next year. So we have all of the the um, the positions filled and that the program is set for a a new year. As far as our budgeting, we also review our budget to make sure this has to be a self-sustaining program. And, oh, and I should mention to our mentorship program, our mentorship program is a part of our QCOM also. And so we look at to see that um, the revenue's coming in, because again, that's a set amount. Um, based on the student membership, we need to make sure it's self-sufficient. That the um, the the money that is paid out or earned um, through the academic achievement of our kids. Um, is actually uh, being maintained by that budget. So we did all of that um, for the year. Um, it's all been closed out. And we're very pleased. We're pleased with the students and the work that they put into not only their FAST and their N W E A test. But also their their most recent M C As, too. Mr. Canings, do you want to add anything to that? So unless you have any questions, and I can certainly share with you any of those pieces that that I um, that I reported to you on that annual basis. For, for example, if you want to see what the budget looks like, um, if you want to see our our notes from that last meeting, I could certainly forward those to you, too.
Is there any plan in the future to go back to a math pool and some of the reading, since it's been six years?
Um, we, we have had the recurring, the recurring pro, um, ha- issue has been reading. And uh, one of the the reasons why, um, Kathy, that reading is um, it's more universal. Um, every single teacher in this school gets it, that, um, that we're all teachers of learning, or excuse me, teachers of reading. Every day, reading can be put into any subject area. Math, it's a little bit tougher. Um, but if that's if that's the area that as a school district, we're showing, um, you know, deficiencies, then that's what the QCOM council will actually decide. That's their first task because the bowls for the district are due October first. So that's the very first thing that the QCOM council will look at all of our MCA data, look at all of the data from this year. And at that first meeting of the year, that's when that goal is created and sent into the state for approval. So this is a state Minnesota Department of Education, um, program. And we must, um, you know, comply with, um, with all of the, um, all of the expectations from from them and receive approval, um, process.
Any, uh, any questions for Kathy on that? All right, with that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes unanimously. All right, item fourteen, uh, can I get a motion to approve the enrollment numbers? Ask present.
Sold.
Motion by member Canings, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by member Canings. Is that a question? Where are we at, Kathy?
Well, we are at four hundred eighty-seven. It's a change of one student. And that one student lower was in kindergarten.
Any, uh, questions from Kathy on that? All right, and none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I was looking at it, wasn't I?
Okay. All right, item number fifteen. Uh, motion to, uh, move our Zoom meeting to Monday, June nineteenth.
Can we do that? Sorry.
Yeah, it'll be fine.
I had to, you have to do the motion first, so.
Yes, you do.
I jumped the gun, sorry.
All right, can I get a motion on that?
Sold.
Motion by member Canings, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by member Schroder. All right, discussion.
My question is, now they have made June nineteenth a holiday. Um, it's Juneteenth, so I don't think we can have a board meeting on that day anymore.
I will double check on that. Um, I believe that what I had heard, um, from my regional superintendent's meeting was that Juneteenth was going to be, um, was going to be in the same category as Columbus State. And so if we're in, so so if you're did well, and see, that's really tough, though, because, um, the way it works is, if school is in session, but school isn't in session. I will double check on that.
Okay. So now banks and banks and government buildings are now closed on Juneteenth. Both some banks, I guess, that are recognizing it and stuff. So I would, before we approve that, I think we should check and make sure that we can have a meeting on that day.
I will do that. And, you know, there are those holidays, um, that we can have school in session, which means that we could have school operations, school business in session. And they are, um, like the Columbus Day, Veterans Day, um, President's Holiday, Martin Luther King Junior Day. And it's the stipulation is that you, if kids are here, we need to be putting in an hour of teaching instruction around that holiday. Um, and if kids aren't here, then of course, it's not a situation. But good point. I I had heard that, and I think they said it was just gonna be like Columbus Day, and so I think it would affect us. I will double check. Get back to you guys tomorrow on that.
Are we gonna approve it then?
Well, can I ask why we're moving in a meeting?
Um, I will be here.
Oh, okay.
On the twenty-fifth. Excuse me, on the twenty, on the twenty-sixth.
Six.
Yep. And so if we can't, if we can't leave it to the the nineteenth, I did clear this with the business office also. Do you, would you possibly be able to meet a different night that week? If we can't use Monday?
Yep.
I can, yeah.
Yeah, whatever day.
I just can't do Wednesday.
Yeah, it's fine, whatever I have.
Okay. And I thank you so much, Casey, for bringing that up, and we'll make sure that we're, uh, we're in compliance. Thank you.
We're gonna discuss a different meeting day then to approve that? Or the alternate date, or how is this gonna work then?
Oh, can we just approve it pending legality? I mean, we can approve it. We're gonna research legality, but if it's not legal, there may be a chance. I don't understand it that way. Um, one thing I wanted to bring up, can we, are you guys with the five-thirty that night rather than six?
For our second, for the next meeting.
Just for that main team.
If we can do it on the nineteenth at five-thirty, yeah.
The only reason I ask is that, well, I have to get up at seven. And that one day for a fire meeting. Otherwise, Corey's gotta finish the meeting, so. I'm good either way, but. So you guys live at five-thirty, the main team, pending when, Kathy's gonna check on that, make sure we're gonna go. All right, so with that, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. All right, move on to donations. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the donations of, uh, box tops for education, seventy-two dollars and eighty cents? And a donation for a hundred and twelve dollars for a Brent and Patty Besser. And that was for malts for all the employees and the students. So who's, motion by member Peterson, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by member Canings. Uh, discussion on that. Just a big thank you. Yep, as always, thank you for the donations.
I do have a question about box tops, though. Is it all digital now?
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything that's sent home? Because, I mean, is somebody in charge of it at school? I used to do it in the local school district, and so somebody just kind of has to keep tabs on it and send information home, so. Whoever, I mean, I don't know. Because I think parents would. Yeah, but all you have to do is scan the box tops on your cereal box at home, and you get, oh, and he says.
Really?
Yeah.
I didn't know how it worked.
I think, I don't know.
And it is, because when it went to this digital, um, that's where it kind of all fell apart. Because otherwise, we did have people here at school who were counting the labels and packing them up and sending them. And we we received a ton of money from that program. So, um, but I think it's, I think it's that whole piece of not knowing.
And I think we should send it out to families and the community.
Or at least just send, oh, help me do it.
Yes.
Should we, should we send out the Coca-Cola products then, too? And get that going again, because that's still out there as well.
Well, and honestly, Casey, you can donate, you can put your rewards towards the school, and I don't know if people know about that. I don't know. Can you make a flyer with options?
Yeah.
For the community to be able to give back. I don't know.
All right, we've got the perfect person that will help us with that.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy.
You bet. Thank you.
Okay, so with that, um, so motion to approve the donations. There you go.
We got the motion, don't we?
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, non-action items. Uh, two thousand twenty-three alumni award recipient, Nathan Fisher.
And Nathan did accept, and, um, Tim was here and worked with, um, with the the students, um, the officers of our twelfth grade senior class. Um, Tim, do you want to share anything about that, the process?
There was, there was several people that are choose from, and they just decided, I don't like to do every year. Took a vote, and they picked me, so. I think, uh, I don't know. I think it's, uh, I mean, they're all good options, too, but, you know. I'm gonna vote, so, yep, congratulations to me.
For sure.
I think he'll do great. I can't wait to hear his opinion.
Well, and this was kind of crazy, too, you know, um, the nomination came in, but, um, at this point, it's anonymous. And we haven't had that in the the past, so, um, I'm still going to reach out and see if there's a way that we can, um, do right by this whole thing. But, um, but, yeah, um, I always get the pleasure of calling the person. And, uh, you know, and I saw Nate even later that same night, I think, and he says, Kathy, I was just so so thinking about it. He says, I didn't say much at all to you. He said, I just, I was just so thinking about that, that, you know, that I would be nominated, and the kids would want me to be. So he is, he's really excited about being, um, honored. And, um, and that's what we would want, so, um, kudos to him and to our our students and the nomination and the whole process. It's a great thing.
All right, uh, eighteen, get the class of two thousand twenty-three graduation list.
We have thirty-three seniors that will be graduating. And you, as we always do, um, find out if there are any people that you really want to be, um, you know, handing that diploma to. And I I just thought maybe there might be a couple of board members that, for sure, want.
Yeah, I suppose.
You know, uh, and this is, you've heard from Mrs. Davis's report. Never, I don't think, never, ever in the history of our school have we had three valedictorians and a salutatorian. So I am so excited, and these kids are just fabulous and, um, so deserving of that. And I know that, um, when it was brought to my attention that, um, well, we have three people that are kind. What do you want to do about it, Mrs. Dolchig? And I said, I agree, and this was, we all felt the same. They're all going to be there and, um, to, you know, to share that stage, and again, rightfully so. We're so proud of them. So we know about, um, Tim. Is there anybody else on here that is a relative or a neighbor or somebody that's very close to your family that you want to make sure that we've got it scheduled so that you can hand them that diploma?
Do, uh, Eric and Gaze?
Okay.
Do you want to add Fisher?
Uh, Kathy?
Yes.
I'm not gonna be able to make it to that.
Okay.
I don't know how to tell them.
Oh, that's right. And and that sometimes happens, Corey. And so this is a good time to let us know, because then I'll just divide that that by five.
Sorry about that, no worries.
No, no.
We'll be on our way out of town. We're finished. Fine, I get it.
Yeah. Yep, and I I get it. That's why I'm asking that we move the meeting, you know, so we we all have those things that, um, come on.
So is there anyone else, so family or friends this year? Well, that one should be easy, Kathy. I have two this year.
And so the other five of you will be here and, um, give that six-thirty, six-forty-five at the very latest. Um, I believe that the the seniors are being asked to be here at six-fifteen, um, that night. Is that right, Dave? Six-fifteen?
It sounds like, I'm looking at it.
So, uh, but yes, so, um, I'll get this all separated out then with the five of you. And I think the order might change, um, so I'm gonna be working with that because usually, you know, of course, our valedictorians are at the front end, so we'll have to see how that all works out. Okay?
Perfect. All right. So, uh, with that, we already moved into nineteen, graduation ceremony involved. Anything else other than here at six-thirty?
No, it's, you know, like we've done in the in the past. Um, I know that Mrs. Davis and I are talking about another kind of a little special thing, so we'll see what what pans out with that. But it wouldn't involve anything that you guys would need to be, um, be in charge of. So just coming and, um, celebrating our our students. And and, yeah, it's graduation Friday night, seven o'clock. Um, and of course, our gym, we'll be in the gym.
All right. Will the AC be on?
Not yet. Really?
It's gonna get warm.
We never have that.
We've never had a K.
That's that's next year's. That's the summer of two thousand twenty-four, maybe. Everything might be pushed back a year.
All right, we'll move on to the bigger conference discussion.
Okay, I I'm hoping that you had the opportunity, um, to read, um, what Benji had prepared for you for tonight. And, um, has anybody heard how we've how we've done up at Nevis? With our baseball team?
They won six to zero.
Thanks, so we're good for that. Okay, we won. So that means we continue to go, um, forward with this, and I know that there's great excitement there. But that's the reason why, um, why Mr. Ben, Mr. Besser was not able to be here in person to share this with you. And so, um, he gave you a, um, gave you a summary. Um, I, the the one thing that that surprised me is that, I think he says, there are only fifty-seven percent of the coaches that have spoken up and have completed the survey. And I know that the, um, the ADs are planning to meet, and I believe it's this Wednesday. That's why they'll be here in the the boardroom. And we, I, they need to make sure that, yeah, so far, fifty-seven percent of head coaches conference-wide have taken the survey, so these these are definitely preliminary results. They have had many discussions. Um, I will share that the superintendents, um, we have a meeting tomorrow talking about this also. So we've had a couple of meetings ourselves. The, um, the ADs have had the meetings, and the way it works is, um, each district receives one vote. And so our vote, um, according to the constitution, the vote that you represent and that I represent is carried forward by our AD at their AD meeting when it comes to that final vote. Um, I did ask if the the meeting would have to happen this week or if it could be moved into June if they're not ready. And at this point, um, um, I was kind of led to believe that they pretty much know where they're where they're going, the other districts. Um, and I'll find out more from the superintends tomorrow. And if I find out that superintendents really aren't, um, as aware of what's happening or if they feel we should pull back, then we'll make sure that that's conveyed to the to the ADs also. Remember that with this expansion, and the expansion is bringing in three new districts into the into the, um, breakover conference, and that would be Aitken, Crosby, Ironton, and Mora. And how it works is, um, I think in the summary, Mr. Besser shared that two of the schools have already been turned down from other conferences. I think it's, if you're turned down twice, then the, um, the state, Minnesota State High School League actually places. And so, um, it's always better, you know, if your if your district wants to be involved with another district, um, that you get basically brought in. Um, because of the planning that would surround it, the the they, the changes would not be until the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And that gives them a full year for the planning, you know, for the scheduling of events. And we have been, it's been shared that there definitely would be two sub-conferences within the large Great River Conference. It would be a ten-district, um, conference. There would be five of the smaller districts, so that our A schools, so that we're a part of, would be one sub-conference. And then the five larger, um, double-A schools would be in another sub-conference. Um, and then, but there are sports that are affected because of the individual status. Um, so track, wrestling, cross-country, and golf, those four sports, um, because they're also have that individual piece to it, that they would be, um, they would be all in one conference, ten schools competing. So, you know, I I did ask, um, Mr. Besser, I said, so, you know, share with us what you think are the advantages and what would be the disadvantages, um, for moving in that in that direction. And that's what he tried to do in that, um, in that summary for you. But again, my 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 feeling is, um, if only five of our head coaches have shared their feelings through the survey, it needs to be stressed by Mr. Besser that all their voices are heard. And then I want him to also bring that to the AD meeting. And all of the head coaches in every district should be heard. That fifty-seven percent has to be a whole lot higher to give all of us, um, as districts an idea of where everybody else sits on this.
So at this point, we're not even ready to make a recommendation?
I wouldn't say you could at this point.
So they're not voting on this on Wednesday that they take it, right?
Well, the, by what I, what was shared with me is that the other schools are maybe. ready to make that decision, but not with fifty-seven percent of the input from their, from their coaching staff.
Well, in this, I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, but this has to be unanimous vote by all the districts, right?
No.
It isn't?
No.
I thought they all had to accept.
No.
Okay.
Not, that's not what I think, that's not what was brought to me.
Okay.
Is that it is basically that majority. And with the, the districts that are in our conference right now, the one thing that was questionable is that both, um, both, um, here it says Malax, but I think by the constitution, Isle Schools and Onania each get a vote. So it's Bram, East Central, Hinckley, Fimlessen, Malax, which is Island, Onania, Oldgley, Pine City, and Rush City. And again, I think it's two. If they're turned down twice, then Minnesota State High School League will, will place them. It could possibly be three. I'll get that.
No, it's twice.
It is twice?
It said it in the email.
Oh, he did say that in this, yeah, if they're turned down twice.
Yeah.
And two of the districts have already been turned down once. So, um, the thought then is, um, even if, even if the conference says no, I mean, they're making a good point, making a point, but it could still be that these schools are placed in our conference. And then I think, um, I think Mr. Besser said then, you know, that's kind of hard if you're starting with some, you know, ill feelings, um, right at the beginning of this larger conference as well. So do any of you feel like you would be ready to share, um, your feelings on this right now?
There are a lot of good points made in Benji's email.
Yes.
When you're doing the pros and cons and comparing the schools to our schools. And it really does depend on what sport you're looking at. Some of our sports, we've got plenty of students showing up to play. And some of our stu-, some of our sports were scraping by for people to play. Whereas like Mora and Aitken and some of those other districts, they've got plenty of kids. And so when you think about a fair advantage, that's a really hard one to, because when our kids get tired, we don't have a pool to, to dip in from, you know what I mean? To give, switch out and give people a break, so I don't know.
I did also think that it would really help with our junior high, um, sports for that same reason, because then there would be a seventh grade team or eighth grade team, um, that they would have more playing time and more, um, more teams to play against.
On the same side of that, we can schedule them games right now. You don't have to play in conference junior high.
Right.
And what do you do when you divide it out seventh and eighth grade and you don't have enough students to play a team for seventh grade or play a team for eighth grade, then you just combine seventh and eighth grade and we don't have a seventh grade or an eighth grade team?
Well, see, that's, that's where, um, I've been so excited about how our sports, um, our teams are growing, our numbers are growing. And so we have the kids to play, but some of the schools don't. So, um, I, I don't think there's any, any sport right now, maybe, um, boys' basketball. I'm not familiar with boys' basketball.
You're too hard, boys' basketball.
We got a mix.
Because they put the seventh and eighth grade together. So, and again, you know, looking at building those skills, um, those skills at a younger age, the, the part that bothers me is that, um, you know, we've worked really hard to build our teams and we're seeing great success. And, um, if our kids are playing against schools that are twice and three times the size, even if it's a sub, a sub-conference, you know, every time you go up against another team and, and you are defeated, what does that do to the, to the athlete's mindset? So that, that part, you know, we're, we're on this, you know, building of our, our programs, and I don't want anything to mess with it, kind of. And there, but there are no guarantees either way.
I guess I'm, at this point, I'm leaning against it until we get more information or more head coaches to weigh in on this.
Okay.
And I can speak for softball, too. We have eleven, we, for nine, for twelve, we had eleven girls, two were dual-sport athletes. So that leaves you with nine, and nine girls play at a field at one time.
So.
There's no backup, and you guys are tired.
That would be my opinion at this point. Anybody else wanna weigh in on that?
I'd agree with you.
Yep. I agree.
Can, I, can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Just since you mentioned the percentage of head coaches who took a survey, did that go out to coaches whose programs are affected by this or all head coaches?
All head coaches, because it is all of the sports.
Did it not go to?
The only, the only.
I guess maybe that's my question.
But it does not get a, we do not get affected.
No, no, it is, it's not first or, yeah.
Well, it does, it could potentially affect us, but none of those schools have speech teams.
Right.
So it does not affect speech.
Yes.
So she was just clarifying, were they waiting for a response from me that I did not know I was supposed to fill out? Because he didn't inform me, I was aware of this.
Okay.
But I was also aware that it did not affect speech.
Yes, that is, that is correct. And it doesn't affect our, our co-op's, um, swimming program, because none of these schools have swimming programs except our co-op with Mora. And that's why all of our swimming events are with other, with other, um, districts and conferences.
So I guess my question is, is the swimming coaches then also receiving?
They have.
Are they wanting, uh, input from them for the survey? Because I would not receive this survey, is kind of what she's getting at.
Good point, good point. But I'm just, I'm just thinking, well, if they, if they put in this fifty-seven percent of head coaches, I would think that'd be fifty-seven percent of the head coaches that were supposed to take the survey, you know? And if you're not supposed to, then.
But we don't know. That's the question, is was I supposed to?
We're gonna ask that of Mr. Besser tomorrow morning, okay? A very good point.
That was the question.
And I knew about all of those because, because the, the conversation didn't happen in my office. So I knew that swimming isn't affected and speech is not affected either.
Yes.
But the other sports are athletics.
All right, so any, any else on that, guys?
I will send it out to you. Um, I'll, I'll send it back out to you. Are, are, well, here's the thing, are you okay, um, with expressing your opinion, um, through an email directly to me after the superintendent meeting tomorrow, um, before the A.D. meeting on Wednesday? Because, because Mr. Besser knows that I'm going to be talking with him about this again because I was the one that asked, hey, let's delay this so that we can make sure that everybody has all the information, but.
I wanna do some research on the other schools and see a little bit more.
I don't know anything about Crosby-Irington. Um, I do know that Aitken used to be in our conference. Aitken asked to be released from our conference because they didn't think we were competitive enough. And now they want to come back into our conference. Um, and of course Crosby-Irington is right up there, you know, next to ordering, um, ordering Aitken. Um, Mora is a mystery to me, to be perfectly honest. Um, I don't know, um, why Mora is, um, you know, Crosby-Irington and Aitken, they were together, they've already been rejected by wanting to go into, where'd they say, the Park, what was that? Um, Park Region Conference. But, um, I, I don't know the scoop on, on, on Mora. I think they, I think they're part of Mississippi Eight, is that, is that right? Are they? I think they're part of the Mississippi Eight, and I don't know why. And, and it, yeah, it hasn't come up in conversation.
Okay, so you're gonna talk to Jesser and try to get some more information, maybe?
But I do know that it is all of three of them or none of them. That's what the A.D.s are gonna be voting on. They would bring all three schools in, um, they're contingent on each other.
Oh, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, all contingent.
That's what I was.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so the policies, first reading, we got, uh, one four, four oh four, four twenty, five twenty-five, five twenty-seven, five twenty-eight, five twenty-nine, and six oh two.
And the reason for these is, this is the last of the legislative action. Um, these are the policies that we haven't, um, haven't addressed yet this year that had legislative, um, changes. It's mostly statute-type changes, um, that were made, um, in July or September of two thousand twenty-two. So, the, at this past summer.
Uh, it switches in June, right? Okay.
But, um, yeah, yes.
So I don't.
Like Kathy.
Yep, I think it, I, I believe that it is, oh, here we go. Um, December through May, June through November. And so we'll have the June group, um, address these.
Yeah.
And that's Tim, Casey, and Josh. Tim, J., Casey, and Josh.
It should be Corey.
I think it's Corey, yeah, yeah. I was just.
Oh, 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 yes, 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 you are right. Josh, you, you can't be in two places at one time. It's, it's Corey. So Tim, Casey, and Corey, my apologies. And, um, so we'll.
That's right.
Well, let's wait until after graduation and, um, and we'll go into like maybe that second week of, um, June, would that work for you?
Yes.
Second week of June? Maybe?
Oh, when you're back from your vacation?
That's, that's what I.
That'd be like eleven through the seventeen?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably more towards the end of that week.
That would work, that would work, um, well for me, too. So that's what we'll plan, as, you know, towards the end of that week.
All right, so we're good on that, we're scheduled to move into committee? All right, so we'll move on to bleacher update.
Okay, here's what it looks like from afar, and here's our R-O-A-R for the roar. Um, I'm going to ask that the A-line go down one, one, one block or one, uh, one. Yeah, so it looks a little bit different. They cannot do graphics for us on the ends, so the paw prints, but we can, we could come, um, we could actually contact like our graphic, um, company that did the floor graphics for us and see if we can get the paws. Um, I think, um, I think Paul found some really cool ones, um, that we'd like to invest in. And so again, um, that would be on these orange, the orange ends. So it's orange, orange, and then the two blacks in the middle. And so it'd be black paw prints on, on the orange background. So that's that. And then what you have, uh, what I passed out to you was the, um, was the, the poster, well, the actual pictures of what it looks like as you go up the steps and in between. So if you take a look at this handout that I gave you, okay? And you see that it says B-one. Okay, so B-one, that's the basic. So you see, it looks like that, the galvanized type of steps and in between each of the, each of the bleachers. There's no charge for that. Um, for B-two, for B-two, looking at the difference there, and there's, um, we can see a little bit more black and the railings, the actual hand railings, I believe, are like a, um, a black or a, um, almost like a bronze, not bronze. Um, three thousand six hundred sixty-two dollars if we go with B-two.
Say that number one more time.
Three thousand six hundred sixty-two dollars. And now, even, even though the picture is showing you a different style of seat, that doesn't have any bearing. It would be the bleachers, standard bleachers like you see in, in B-one. Okay, so for B-three, B-three, it's the black, um, polyethylene, ethylene laminated deckboards. Um, and again, you see more black there with the, um, with the black aluminum tri, black kickboards. And that would cost nine thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars. And then if you look at the back, the complete blackout, and that's what that would look like, the blackout is fourteen thousand one hundred seventy dollars to add to our, our project. And what I was, what I thought we should do is, I think all the kids and the staff and you and all of us, that we should vote on it. If you're, if you're willing to spend up to that fourteen thousand dollars, and remember, this is part of our referendum, and there is contingency money that is available. So I really don't believe that, um, that it's going to, that the money is going to be an issue, is what I'm saying. It's gotta be what we want for the next thirty-some years here in our, in our gym for the bleachers. So I was going to ask Becky to see if we could put the visual and put out a survey where people could vote for, vote for the, the bleacher, um, the bleacher background, um, that they would want.
Yep.
You okay with that?
Yeah, yeah.
But it's not the seating.
Nope, the seating has nothing, it will all be, it'll be seating just like this.
Get confused.
It'll be seating just like this.
Oh.
Yeah.
And so maybe, maybe what we, and I, Paul, I don't think he could get us other, um, other pictures. That's why I said, what do you mean, what's with these seats? They're really funky. And he says it doesn't apply to the seats. So.
They're gonna look at the whole picture and go, oh, that's kinda wacky.
Well, should we, should we?
I will say, I was at Tino Grace, and they have this all blackout, the whole blackout. And if it's not lit up in there, it is really hard, even with that stuff illuminated, to see where your steps are.
I was gonna say that, I believe that something aluminum offset color would really be an advantage for.
Yeah, that is my only objection to those super dark.
Yeah, so we had that discussion, didn't we?
I watched somebody fall down the stairs at Tino because it was just, I mean, and it was kinda dark, but, I mean, they had, the bleachers looked amazing, but it was super hard to see where the steps were. And the person in front of me missed the step completely and just kinda tumbled. So I, for, that's my only objection to the blackout and, and the black stairs in general is that it's, it's.
Too much black would be too much.
Yeah.
Definitely.
They look really sharp, but they really still.
Yeah, your depth perception, you get totally screwed up on that.
Wonder what we have ordered by Kathy?
They're waiting on this. This is the, this is the last piece, so, you know, it's.
We don't really have time for a survey, then.
We, we do, I mean, before the end of school, um, you know, and then get it out there. Or you tell me, you tell me what you, what you think we should go with, and we'll get the order in tomorrow.
Well, what do you guys think?
What is this, a B-two, this black part, is that like you can walk on that? It's like, you know?
Yeah. Well, because, because in this, they have seats instead of benches, so that's your, where your feet go.
I know, but like if there's a bench instead, okay, I get it. So your feet are on the black part. And the other ones, your feet are on the floor.
So, yeah, I think the only difference is that, um, B-one.
It'll look just like that.
Yeah.
It's.
Because this is a chair matting.
That galvanized color and then the bottom is the black color.
Well, I think that's what you're buying, is that extra piece.
The B, the B-one, to me, doesn't look fancy enough. The one that comes at no charge.
I like the price.
Yeah, I know, I know. Um, and so, you know, the, the B-two, the B-two, there's, you know, more of that galvanized to offset the, um, the, the black, the black steps.
B-one and B-two look pretty much the same.
There you go.
Don't they?
There, there is also, um, over in the, the board cap, that there's another, there's another set.
I feel like these are wider, like a wider stack. But you've got seats on there instead of benches.
I think that the B-three just has a little bit more of that galvanized, um, ob, you know? Or B-two has more of the galvanized, um.
I guess I'd be all right with B-two.
B-two?
Olivia, you're gonna be here next year, so why?
I like to work on the best. Looks great.
I just would be super nervous about elderly people.
I just would be super nervous about elderly people and older population.
Their depth perception is not, it's, that's gonna just flow together and you're gonna have a mess.
Bleachers are harder to walk because of the hazards.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, I'm all right, so whatever.
What do you guys think?
B2 is about one-third the cost um as B3, thirty-six, thirty-seven hundred dollars versus ninety-one, ninety-two. So B2 look okay with you guys?
They all look the same, to be honest.
Oh, do they really? Do they to you?
I didn't see a lot of difference.
There's not a lot of difference.
No, they changed the handrails and what's going on on the floorboard a little bit, but it looked good.
Handrails are a little different.
Yep, the handrails are different.
Are the seats different or what?
No, the seats do not. It's the natural features that the black, the steps, the steps going up.
Gotcha, now I understand.
B2.
Okay, I'm gonna recommend B2 then. Thank you very much. They will be very happy.
So, oh. All right, so I don't take any pictures. Uh let's go with the track discussion now.
Okay. I don't know how much, if if anything, that Gary covered, um covered that um today. But um here's the thing, you know, with re-looking at um the the excavation part of the the bid. Um what was shared with us at district operations is that if we only go up a bit of the level with the track, then we could take off, you know, three hundred thousand, six hundred thousand dollars. But um and I I don't think we should be changing from that, from that first plan. If they say that the best thing is to build our track up two to three feet, why would we leave it at the same level that it is right now?
No, yeah, I agree. I mean, I have a hard time building at that level because it hasn't lasted thirty years. We've already redone it once.
Mm-hmm.
That was about fifteen years ago.
Right, and we agreed, and we fixed it. Um you know, substantially fixed it. Um of, you know, in between that time too, so two, two, two times for sure.
I mean, we got issues. Maybe we only have to go up as high, but I think it needs to be raised.
So.
No matter how we look at this.
So I was really pleased with your action tonight. I thought that there were going to be new bids coming in. But but here's the thing, um just redo the whole thing and go with what's been recommended by these architects and these people that um that have been, you know, basically here to share with us what needs to be done. Let's not um strip on that or we're gonna be faced with the same problems. So we just have to find that money.
Or get, we only have one bid?
Yep.
For the track too?
Yep.
Correct.
So the math sex reading for this summer.
That it's for the whole site.
We only got one bid for it.
Because they had anticipated on doing it this year and bid it for this year and that's why we only got one bid.
And Jess was gonna do the two bids, the one for the playground and then.
Just gonna do the playground, the issue, the stuff that has to be done, that's what's coming back to us.
But they're rebidding for that, right? And they're throwing out.
And then they would rebid for anything else too because the scope of the project would change then, yeah.
Yeah, I feel better about that, so. But I agree, I'd like to, wanna fix it right and not wish we did ten years from now, thirteen years. Exactly. So. Okay, so anything else on the track, Kathy? All right, okay. Uh with that, uh anybody got another?
I have another. Uh I have a question. So while we're addressing the bullying stuff, can we also address the PBIS program? And kinda talk about that. Um a lot of the parents that I have heard from don't know that this program is working in our school district just because of how it appears to them and to their students. And so I think as a board, I know I definitely have a lot more questions about the program to understand the depths of how it works and what the um idea is behind it and of course, you know, looking at just the hows and whys of the whole system. I don't know how you guys feel about it, but I thought while we're discussing the bullying and stuff, PBIS might be a nice thing to take a deeper dive into also and look to see how it's working in our district and the ins and outs of it.
So, so Casey, having, having a request that do you want us to bring information to you then? Um as a board at the next meeting or how how do you want to learn more about the PBIS program?
Well, that's the part that I haven't really figured out because I know that my questions are gonna be deeper questions that I don't know if we can answer in the middle of a public meeting. But I also think that it's something that our community needs to hear also. Because I don't know that everybody fully understands what the PBIS program is and what the intended um outcome of it is. Um some of the feedback that I've gotten back from families is, is that it feels like to the students and it looks like to the parents that the bullies, um the person that's doing the bullying's um punishment is less severe than the student that's being bullied. And so that's why I would just kinda like to dive into the program a little bit deeper and have a little bit of a better understanding um for myself and for the community, just to see. And then maybe talk about anything, to see how we can improve it, what we can do so families don't feel that way. You know, just an overall improvement. We've heard a lot about bullying and so I just think if we just take a look at stuff, there's no harm that can be done in that, seeing what we can do differently and how we can do it better on all levels.
So at the elementary, we we are meeting as our PBS committee um tomorrow to create an action plan for next year.
Okay.
So if you want, you can.
What time is that meeting tomorrow?
Uh three forty-five.
Three forty-five, I'll see if I can get in for that.
And the part that you should also be aware of is that we're not in full implementation at, yet. But every one of our employees that has been here for the last two years um have been, they they know the the premise, they know the structure of the PBIS, but not actually the details on how they can be, um how they can be involved uh more, um more with it. And so, for example, um the bus drivers. That's, that is one area that we know bullying happens. And so we, we really, I really want our bus drivers to be implementing um PBIS. And basically, um with the implementing is we want kids to know what the expectations are and that they are praised, that they are rewarded when they are meeting the expectations. And, you know, when we have kids that want to do what's right because it's the right thing to do, then that will also end up, um you know, diminishing any kind of the discipline behaviors on the bus. And I mention that because we know that's where some of the bullying is happening and we know that's where it's the hardest to actually help because we've got one driver. And that driver's job is to make sure that, you know, eyes on the road to make sure that the kids are safely getting to and from school. And so do we still, you know, stay, stay with that structure and and have have kids? You know, we used to have um school bus patrols years ago. Do we, you know, implement something like that? Um do we have, again, that concrete, um the concrete expectations of kids and making sure that they're reminded of those expectations? It's that making kids aware, making, you know, all the time to help them internalize what's expected and that it's a great thing when you're doing what you're supposed to be doing. And if you're not, then there are actions that need to take place.
All right, so so I guess do you want various, do you wanna be more involved with the programming aspect of it or?
I'll see if I can take a meeting tomorrow and listen in here. How things go and maybe go from there, because
Okay.
That, I mean, that's basically what I understood about it as well. But the part that I'm having a hard time connecting with is how do the students feel like the person that's misbehaving or bullying or whatever gets a lesser punishment than a student that's not? So that's, I mean, that's where I kinda just wanna learn, do a deeper dive into the program and learn more about it and see, you know, i- is this, I'm not saying anything bad about it, but I'm just saying, is this a good fit for our district? Or is it, do we need to look at it a little bit differently? That, that's all. So I can attend the meeting tomorrow.
And then the way I look at it is PBIS is is the proactive side of things. So we're trying to teach expected behaviors and reteach e- expected behaviors. Um and ideally, we have eighty percent or more of our kids who are do, following our expectations. And then we come up with plans for the individual students who are not. As far as as the bullying side, that's more of the discipline side of things. The PBIS isn't really the the punishment side of it or or the corrective actions. That's not the intention of it. It's more of the teaching the expectations um and then acknowledging positive behaviors as well.
So we kinda run the two side by side, well, several different things alongside of, so it's not all just the PBIS. Okay, we'll have fun tomorrow. See you later. I'll try to come along.
I'd love to have you. We just started, um we have three parents who joined back in April, so.
Perfect.
We're trying to add more and more people.
Okay, good, thank you.
All right, any other others?
I'd just like to say at this board meeting, I'd like to also uh thank Bailey for her service here uh on the board that you've done for a couple of years. Um and also, uh congratulations, we don't get to do it at the at the graduation, but just a congratulations to uh and thank you to all the seniors for the hard work that you guys have done here and uh that you do very well in your future.
All right.
There we go.
Well, with that, I'll take a motion for twenty-five.
Motion to adjourn at eight seventeen.
Taken by a member of the team, it's the second.
Second.
Second by a member of the team. We'll discuss it on that one. All right, if you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.